Audience, we will not waste much time on pontificating. I have a lot I'd like to say, but we'll move right on. And we will start off with the library, right? So Ms. Gilbert? Thank you. Make sure you do, is there? Oh, yeah, it's not the regular microphone, so make sure it's on.
Can you hear me? Okay, thank you all, all of you. Got it. So this is our 2019-2020 fiscal year budget. There's not a whole lot here that's different from what we've been doing for the past several years, so it's kind of a whole routine budget. Lift Bridge, this is our new challenge of the year. I'm sure you all know that the lift bridge will be going up and closing in right after Labor Day for 15 months, is what they're saying. So we're making a concerted effort to work extra hard to bring people to the village, to have them continue to use the library, to not go to Penfield, and to come into Fairport and into the village. So there are a couple of things that are budgetary impacts that I'll talk about as we get there. Basic ongoing challenges, these aren't really different from the last several years, the retirement contributions, the healthcare costs, tax levy, Monroe County Library System, I'll talk about a little bit later. We have a lot of employees that are at or near minimum wage, so an increase in minimum wage has a budgetary impact for us. We are heavily technology-oriented for our services, and we've done some work on reaching different parts of the Fairport parenting community as it changes. So a quick summary of the breakdown of our budget. We're a service organization, so our budget is heavily salaries. So the first two lines are salaries and benefits. Then the third line is pretty self-explanatory, that's our collections of all different kinds. Occupancy costs, that's rent, it's utilities, it's insurance, it's building maintenance, all the things that we have to pay in order to stay in our facility. Monroe County Library System, again, I'll talk about that in a little bit. And equipment is, for the most part, technology-related equipment. Professional fees are if we need an accountant or an IT professional to come in and help us with everything, and then all the other things in the budget. This is just a rundown historically of our budget over 10 years and the increases that we've had. Personnel expenses, on the far right-hand column, I've got FTEs. That's kind of an estimate because in some of these lines, we have lots of very, very part-time people. For example, in pages, we use a lot of high school kids, some of them will work three or six hours a week, so to make that into an FTE is an estimate. But professional, those are the librarians. Clerical are the people who check the books out, process the books. Pages work the front desk, checking books out, and also shelve the books. Then obviously custodians are cleaners. Aides are, for the most part, the people in the children's room who help people find books and shelve the books. Benefits, New York State Retirement, health insurance, Social Security, and then other benefit issues. Revenue sources besides property taxes. We are doing something different this year as far as fines and fees because we want to encourage people to continue using the library while the bridge is up. So we are, for the period that the bridge is up, eliminating overdue fines on children's and teen materials. So we've lowered that number to reflect that loss in income. Pilot is payment in lieu of taxes, that's an estimate. State aid is the money we get from the state to the library. We get very little direct state aid, most of our state aid is funneled through the Monroe County Library System. And income, as you see, is almost nothing. And then appropriated fund balance. We have a healthy fund balance, and every year we study it and look at different categories, I'll show you that later, and then take what we think is reasonable amount and use it for that year's budget. This is the tax cap levy calculation, which I don't understand. We get an accountant to do this for us, so I'm not going to try to explain it to you, but just to show you that it is a very complicated formula, and we are well within the allowable amount. You'll see down at the bottom that our allowable increase is almost $108,000, or more like And we, like I said, we have a healthy fund balance. This is the breakdown of how we allocate the fund balance, so that we are, in the future, when large expenses come up, we can use the fund balance and it won't impact our operating expenses, and we won't have a huge tax increase, which we can't do under the tax cap anyway. Capital is for building expenses. Employee separation, we've got a lot of people who are close to retirement, so we need to have a pot of money for when they retire and we pay out their vacation leave or what they need, that it's not going to impact our budget for that particular year. Library enrichment, these are monies that have been donated, and we use those for special projects, whoops, sorry, for, we've done some arts, some building enhancements, things that aren't normal library programs. Technology improvements, when we renovated three and a half years ago, we completely upgraded our technology. So now, we're trying to do on a three-year cycle, the big expenses, and to have the money in there so that we don't have to take $50,000 out of the budget in order to get a new server. Repairs and replacements, this is equipment. We put in all-new HVAC and all those kinds of things, so we want to have some money when that runs out. Cash flow is the money we keep in the budget so that during the first three or four months, we have enough to pay our bills and keep going. And then we appropriated $203,867 out of the capital, or out of the fund balance for this coming year's budget. So few service numbers. Total circulation, we're up to $633,333, a little bit down from last year, but not a huge amount. You can see that digital materials is up. It's not taking over like the prediction was a few years ago, that we would be completely digital. Library use of digital materials is increasing, but as you look at the marketplace, the sales of digital materials is actually plummeting, so people are buying books in paper format again. Digital items are difficult for us because we don't actually purchase them, we license them, and they're a lot more expensive than the paper products. So if you get a book that's digital, you might have it for 26 circulations and then it just goes away. Or you might have it for two years and then it just goes away. And it costs more than a regular book. So it's expensive for us to do the digital, but obviously people are using them and want them. And then visitors to the library is the last line. And some programming data, early literacy programs, otherwise known as storytime. These are a combination of stories and songs and movement and things, and it's all to get children ready to learn to read. And we are like superheroes in early childhood literacy. We have the cutest kids in the world coming in on a regular basis. Programs for children, those are not the traditional storytime, but other programs for children. And then teens and programs for adults. Programs for adults could be the driver training, travel logs, book discussions, all sorts of different topics. So I talked a little bit about the money we pay to the Monroe County Library System. This is sort of hidden to the rest of the world, but it's kind of our background, our infrastructure. It's a combination of different things together that's cheaper than if we tried to do it separately. So we do daily delivery weekdays between libraries, so every day a truck comes from any library. That means you can put a hold on any book in the system, and within a couple of days it'll show up. You don't have to drive to Arundacote or Hamlin or wherever to get the book. Our automation is, for the most part, based at the central library, our catalog, our circulation, we get Wi-Fi and Internet access from them, online databases, some of our digitized materials. So it's a huge part of what we do, it's transparent to the rest of the world, but we all know that it's really important to us. So we did a strategic plan a year ago, and we've been working on implementing it. We're working on the changing population. We have an aging population, so we're looking at, without giving up any of our children's programs, doing more for seniors. We see a lot of people who need technology, they don't have access to it, or maybe they don't have the ability to use it. And I'm sure you realize that the world is forcing us more and more to do everything through technology, and it's a big problem. There's a lot of people out there who don't have that skill and ability, or don't have access to that. So we provide that to people. And we do one-on-one training, we do classes, we do tech tutor drop-ins where you can bring your iPad and have somebody help you use it, or your phone. And we're going to go one step further, starting in July, we're partnering with literacy volunteers. They have a digital literacy program, and they'll place a tutor in the library for so many hours a week. And that tutor can go beyond what we can go do and sit down with somebody for an hour or more and go through a job application process, or some really in-depth work. And we can do a lot, but we can't do the really in-depth things. So we're trying to expand that. We've got a lot of collaborations going with organizations. We're doing, for example, English language training with Learning Links. They come in one day a week and do citizen classes and English language classes, and that's totally volunteers. So we've got a lot of things going on. And like I said, a lot of our services have a basis in technology. We've got digital eBooks, magazines, audiobooks. Audiobooks are like the thing these days. I don't know if you guys listen to them, but everybody wants them, and a lot of people are getting so they want it on their phone. They don't want those CDs that they have to plug into the thing. So like I said, we're actively teaching community members how to use technology, and we have remote access to many, I've been doing this forever. When I started out in libraries, we had a card catalog and a reader's guide. And now everything, you just push print and it's there. That's a huge improvement. So libraries in many, many different formats. Sometimes we'll have, well, people will call up and they'll say, you know, "Do you have?" And they'll list a title. And then we'll say, "Well, do you want that in regular print, large print, audio, CD, eBook?" And so a lot of times, we'll have these things in five or six different formats to reach everybody. We have programs for everybody from birth all the way through, early childhood literacy. We partner with Rochester Works for Workforce Development Programs. We started doing this in '08, and it's been a really, unfortunately, a really successful for us program, that we've got people that are continuing to come in. We had one the other day, there were 25 people there, I think it was a resume thing. And I mentioned the English language skills. And then, now that we've had our renovated facility, we have lots of different spaces for lots of different uses, and we can accommodate the people that have children that want to make noise, and the people who want to have a silent place to work, or work one-on-one in a private area. So the new renovations helped us out a lot in what we can offer. So here's just a breakdown of, for a property assessed at $200,000, what the cost has been over the last several years. And the estimate for 1920 for a property of $200,000 is $151,80. And that's what I've got. Thank you all for listening to me.
My name is Brett Provenzano, Superintendent of Fairport Schools. Right now, I'm Matt Stevens, Assistant Superintendent for Business, and myself will be presenting the 2019-20 budget. To me, the 2019-20 budget is a story, and I think it starts last year when we had our District Advisory Council, and we had the opportunity to connect with approximately 3,000 school members, community members, to get their inputs on their expectations and hopes and dreams for our schools. And we feel through that process, there's 107 people who are actually sitting on our District Advisory Council, who help process survey information from our DAC process, and we feel like we have a good beat on the community's expectations. And our Board of Education, to their credit, you know, has high expectations of being accessible and transparent, and making sure that they're reaching out and understanding what the community's needs are. There's been several community budget forms with staff and community members. We have a district planning team where stakeholders from the district, within the district, speak to their expectations and hopes, and how best we can allocate our resources. And we have an audit and finance committee that also processes the budget and our finances at a micro level. So we feel like, you know, we have a good handle, and our story is being written in this year's budget. And that budget goals were set, and we can confidently say that the community hopes and expects, and our board shares those expectations, that we have instructionally and developmentally appropriate class sizes, that mental health and other unique learning needs of our students are addressed. And we need to continue to engage our students in a way that no one else does, like Fairport. We're proud of our clubs and our electives, and how we give students the opportunity to connect with each other and our staff and their environments. Curriculum management, that was a big piece of what we learned over the past year. There's high expectations that we manage our curriculum, that our educational programming continues to be of the highest quality, but we also look to build coherence. And so no matter where we are, no matter what school you go to, we can have this guaranteed curriculum, so all students are getting that wonderful Fairport experience, whole-child experience. And here's a new one, maintenance of our aging facilities to support 21st century learning. Allocating up to 1% of our annual budget on identified needs of our building condition survey. The past year, the Board of Education spent so much time looking at studying, analyzing what are buildings needed, and this budget will reflect those priorities. This idea of cost containment really being intentional, and how we can be fiscally responsible and contain costs, maximizing partnerships using our BOSI's networks, and doing the best from ordering to streamlining processes have been priorities. And taking a look at our reserves, because we know that reserves, they're necessary, especially in this era of the tax cap, using them wisely and prudently to sustain our school. The priorities included, again, focusing on the whole child and developmentally appropriate practices. You'll see that there'll be staff added to protect this priority in this budget. We're also allocating resources to support the social-emotional needs of our students, and the changing needs of our students, more than ever. We see that our students are changing, and there'll be a need to add two psychologists that will support our buildings to maximize coverage, to make sure that we're building capacity within our staff, that we're addressing needs that do arise from time to time in our buildings. And there can be a support for families as well. Educational programming is a budget priority. Again, appreciate the Board's commitment to guaranteeing that all of our students today and tomorrow, I mean, those who haven't even entered our schools, will have high-quality programming. And it starts with our educational programming initiatives, which are addressed also in this budget with instructional coaches and a commitment to professional development and ways to build upon our strategic planning efforts. Long-term objectives, fiscal sustainability and maximizing efficiencies, containing costs, and this idea of continuing to put our message out, continuing to invite people into the budget process, and facilities planning, protecting our investments, making sure that we're maintaining and repairing. We heard that over and over the past year, and it is redundant, but it's an important theme. And you'll see that we've allocated $800,000 in this year's budget to maintenance and mechanical needs throughout our district, and $130,000 for upgrading our phone system. That will be part of our budget story. We'll be talking about our expenditures, which includes our three parts of our budget, will be the program, the administrative costs associated with our budget and program, the capital costs as well. And then that will give us our total expenditures, and then Mr. Stevens will ride us home and drive us home and talk about how we're going to pay for all these wonderful things that we do here in our schools. And then there's some voter propositions we'll be reviewing. It starts with our enrollment. We've had steady decrease in enrollment, and you see in 2016, 2017 school year, and you can see how, over the past several years, enrollment has declined, all right? And these numbers are going through our K-12 system right now. You'll see that we have 400 students projected, or 402 this past year. And our graduating class will be 495 this year, and projected to be 478. So you could see that declining enrollment will have its impact. But the good news is that we've stabilized with our declining enrollment. We've engaged in a comprehensive enrollment study this fall, and we have confidence that our projections are going to hold true around that 5,600 mark for the next five years and beyond. We're fairly confident that those numbers will remain stable as we move through. You'll see that cohorts grow throughout time here in Fairport. That's because we are a community where people come, and people also are leaving, but we also know that people are coming to our community as well. So that's why we have, you know, those cohorts are growing slowly, but, you know, not at a significant rate, but just to sustain our enrollment. And as for planning purposes, that helps us significantly. Board of Education has high expectations with our learning environments, making sure that teachers, staff members have an opportunity to connect with our students. And we feel that in K-1, 2, keeping the numbers at developmentally appropriate ranges, we're very proud of our class sizes because we feel that it's an investment, an investment that will pay dividends as students continue to go through our school here in Fairport, our school system. You'll see that this year's budget, there'll be a change in staffing, again, as a result of those expectations with class sizes of one at Brooksville, one additional staff member at Dudley, and one at JA. We're reducing a section at Northside. At the secondary, we maintain our ranges between 24 and 26 students. We understand that there are anomalies. Sometimes there's capstone classes, classes where health, wellness, and safety are a priority, and the size of the classroom we need to take into consideration, and we will dip below that. We have elective threshold of 20 students, so in some of our electives at the high school, you'll see kids in classes of 21, 22. Again, that's just to expand opportunities to students, it's part of the Fairport experience. But these are the ranges when we staff. A lot of hard work was put into our staffing. We feel that it's more organized, and we're, have a good grasp on how we're moving forward for the next several years. We can make predictable projections. Our total 2019-20 budget of program administrative and capital expenditures comes to $132 million with a 2.4% increase over previous year's budget. It's a 2.47% increase. If you look at our total program component, that's 2.48%. That's everything associated with student instruction. That's support services, transportation, classroom teachers, public and private parochial transportation. It's 100 million of our $132 million budget, a significant portion. And this is where you'll see the additions of psychologists, the two psychologists, behavior psychologists that support the mental health needs of our students, the two classroom teachers are in here that will be designated to our elementary levels. Here it is broken down. Individual lines, you'll see a summer school increase of 24.49%. That's because we reallocated funds there and, you know, made sure that we were paying from the right line items and for accommodating purposes. Another theme that you'll see, there's a decrease in our employee benefits. That's because health rates remained flat, and our employee benefits, which includes our flexible spending accounts, our health reimbursement accounts, our unemployment insurance, our life insurance, disability, et cetera, those went down marginally, and you'll see that as a decrease throughout this budget presentation. The New York State Retirement System contributions in 2019-2020, the rate is estimated to decrease from an average contribution rate of 14.9% to 14.6%. And TRS contribution player rate is estimated to decrease from 10.62% to 8.86% as a contribution rate as a percentage of our staff's salary. This was an advocacy point this past year. We're happy and pleased that, you know, we're going to be able to create a sub-reserve in our employee retirement service reserve to plan and support future payments out of a specific reserve. But we know that these rates will fluctuate. They've been, as recent as 2014, 17.53%. And, you know, we're at our lowest point at 8.86%, but we'll see these fluctuate, and it's important that we, you know, continue to, you know, watch, and, you know, it's based upon stock market performance, and that's why it fluctuates from year to year. But it worked out this year in our favor. Summary, again, of some major staff changes here in Fairport, I have alluded to them. Here they are separated. You'll see that we are adding two instructional coaches for STEM and Humanities. These instructional coaches are federal grant-funded, so it's at no additional cost to the budget. But again, it's looking at our positions, doing some close analysis, and taking a look at our educational priorities, making sure we have the right resources of support for staff to implement our instructional expectations. There'll be an additional increase of 2.0 special education teachers through our Committee on Special Education Process. And we're honored, we're obligated to honor the recommendations of that committee. The administrative costs of our budget, again, costs associated with all the administration of the district and each school building. So these are our principals, our district administration, central office, et cetera. It's 10 or 11% of our budget. And here it is broken down. You'll see a 5.81% increase in our essential services. That's because it's associated to our BOSI's partnership. And BOSI's, we're able to receive aid on our BOSI's partnerships. In order to maximize the aid, we do have plenty of opportunities to use their services. There's been an increase in administrative costs in that line item. We use, again, BOSI's from programming to network and technology support. Our capital budget, costs associated with the operation and maintenance of our school facilities. You'll see bus purchases, debt service. There's $500,000 transferred from debt service fund to offset local share of debt, and it also includes our public library debt. It's 13% of our budget. And here it is broken down. Bus purchases, we are going to be replacing 12 buses. We're on an approximate 10-year replacement cycle. Factors that go into purchasing buses are the mileages of the buses, the age of the bus, and the cost of keeping, upkeep of the bus relative to the maintenance associated with keeping the bus running and safe. And of course, I'll And of course, always trying to maximize our trade-in values. We're getting 71 passenger buses, four 28 passenger buses and one 23 passenger bus. And you'll see that there's a 2.68% decrease in that line as well. The operation and maintenance is worth revisiting again. Again, there's $930,000 allocated specifically to the upkeep and maintenance of our facilities. Anywhere from, you know, carpet replacement at Dudley to VCT replacement in classrooms to adding more security cameras, you'll see it there. And again, that's a reflection of our community's expectations and the work of the Board of Education as they've studied our building condition survey. You'll see that there's $600,000 coming offline or debt drop-off. That's because of a 2001 project on classroom renovations, that payment has come in full. So we have our total expenditures, program of 2.48%, our administrative expenditures of 1.94% and our capital expenditure of 2.83% with a grand total increase of 2.47%. Matt Stevens, our Assistant Superintendent for Business, will come forward now and talk about the revenue side of the budget. Mr. Stevens?
Thank you, Mr. Provenzano, and good evening, everybody. As mentioned, the next piece we'll take a look at will be the revenue pieces in the budgets. So the major pieces for the school district and schools across the state would be state aid and property taxes. Those are the two biggest pieces of revenue the district receives. We'll take a look at the details as we go through. We also get sales tax from Monroe County. There's a sharing across the school districts and the county of the sales tax that comes forth. And some of the other revenues would be charges for services. Those would be, you know, any admission fees, loss books, just, you know, facility use, those types of, those types of areas. And then the final piece would be the reserves and fund balance and that's the money used to offset any, you know, revenue shortage in the budget. Also looking at current year funds and assigning them up to next year's budget on the revenue side. So trying to manage the tax impact for future years by utilizing year-end funds for 2018-19. A couple of pieces on the state budget, the adopted state budget, a few highlights to the main pieces would be foundation aid and categorical aids. You can see the increases there as that relates to Fairport. It's approximately a little over $500,000 in projected aid increase between foundation aid and categorical aids. Foundation aid is the main operating aid for schools, our general operating aid, and the categorical aids are primarily the expense-based aid such as transportation, BOSI's, building aid, all based on expenses in the previous school year that aid flows in the following school year. And a couple of other pieces, the property tax caps permanent, as Mr. Provenzano mentioned, the right to establish a TRS reserve fund as part of a sub-fund in the ERS reserve, and some STAR changes. So a piece that could impact individual homeowners, key piece, just take a look at that, look at the real property website and just to review some of the STAR changes. Those are at the state level in terms of the exemption and the credit that we receive as homeowners. And then the building condition surveys begin to stagger. Those are currently every five years. They began back in 2005 and now looking at staggering those. Those are essentially surveys that schools do that help drive future capital work, identifying pieces within the school district for future capital work. So our state aid revenue overall, $41.2 million. The foundation aid increase, as mentioned, that's our main operating aid, about a 1% increase there. Our transportation, BOSI's and building aid, as Brett mentioned, we utilize BOSI services to, you know, that ends up driving aid in future years in terms of maximizing efficiencies in aid. Access cost aids, we related to our private access cost and public access cost aid for special needs students. We receive aid back on those pieces. And other categorical aids such as our textbook, library materials, hardware, software, urban, suburban aid and so forth. So overall, about a $587,000 projected increase for 2019-20 state aid revenue. And here's just a history of the revenue. Historically, we had some, if we remember the gap elimination adjustments in years past, was money taken away from schools to fill the state's fiscal gap. That money was restored. You can see the last major restoration in 2016-17 where you see a large increase of a little over $3 million. That was restoration of GEA. Once that's complete, now you start to see the modest increases of $600,000 in 1819 and about, as mentioned before, about $300,000 in 2019-20 for the foundation aid. Another piece we'll see as we go through, one of the propositions would be spending from the tech reserve. So in an effort to balance easing off of our reserve expense, monies have been shifted within the general fund for purchases of, you know, hardware and software, equipment and such through BOSI's, again, drives BOSI's aid, and then decreasing the amount spent out of the tech reserve over the next few years in essence to eventually not rely on the tech reserve for technology purchases and have that built within our general fund. The next piece is the property tax levy limit. We'll talk about that, but essentially it's known as 2%, but there are exclusions that could have the property tax levy limit above 2% or could be below 2%. For this year, primarily because of the tax base growth factor, so the town of Perrington had a, the largest tax base growth factor that I've seen in Fairport of 1.0236. In essence, as that flows through with our pilots and our exclusions from, for the current school, for 2019-20, even with a decrease in the exclusions from 1.9 million down to 1.1 million, the overall tax levy limit is allowable at 3.28%. Again, that's primarily because of the tax base growth. If we remember in 2018-19, we saw a reassessment of homes, so the 2018-19 tax rate actually was a drop of over 4%. So while the levy went up, inverse relationship between the two, we saw a decrease in the tax rate. So it's an important piece as the tax base growth factor looks at some of those pieces and gets factored in at the state level. So that comes from the officer of real property. So our overall projected revenue to make up the expense side of the budget, so it's a zero, a zero balance budget between revenues and expenses. You can see overall between state aid and property tax being our two largest pieces, pilots, those would be payments in lieu of taxes primarily related to county of Monroe Industrial Development Agency as well as the Fairport Industrial Development Agency have agreements with businesses in terms of the tax piece, they make a payment in lieu of tax over approximately 10 years until they become onto the full assessed value. So that's money is that the school district receives for any new development in those pieces. Sales tax and other primary piece of the 6.6 million would be a little over five and a half, about five and a half million dollars of sales tax that comes from the county. And then our federal Medicaid that we receive back from the government. And the next three pieces would be related to what the district's assigning for fund balance and reserves for, to offset the revenue side of the budget. So looking at 2018-19 and taking the $3.9 million of remaining funds in 1819 and allocating that to 2019-20's budget. As Brett mentioned before, the debt service fund, there's an expense side of the budget related to debt service and the district's made a commitment to transfer $400,000 per year out of our debt service fund. That money can only be used to offset the local share of debt. $104,000 of that is related to a short-term borrowing on our transportation facility project called a bond anticipation note. The lender offers a premium of which the district receives, holds it for a year and uses that to pay back the interest. It essentially brings down the net interest payment on the debt. And then the next piece is the assigned reserves. We'll take a look at those pieces in terms of specifics on the reserves on the next slide. Here's a, here's a breakdown in terms of how we get to determine what reserves and fund balance could be needed for the following year's budget. First, start with the expense side. Factor in the revenues and that would be the state aid, property tax, sales tax. Factor in, and then we have the debt service fund transfer, leaving a balance of 5.2 million needed to come from the fund balance and reserves in order to come up with $132 million on the revenue side. Overall, we see a trend of decreasing primarily because of the increase in budget. We see a decrease in the percentage of fund balance to reserve. So it's important to keep in, keep in mind, in order to continue the 3.9 million that we saw here on, on the previous slide, let's see, great, thank you. In order to continue this 3.9 million, it essentially means the district has to be able to come up with that each year at the end of the fiscal year in order to not start the following year short the 3.9 million. So the district works and plans long-term to be able to continue to plan for that piece in the budget. Here's a breakdown of the assigned fund balance and reserves. We'll jump down to the reserves themselves. We've talked about the other two, the tax tertiary reserve, that is money that may be used to pay any refunds of taxes. They happen typically in the beginning of each school year, around September, October. So we allocate and estimate $20,000. And what actually will, can be pulled out of that reserve is with the actual expenses. So if the expense is only $10,000 for refunds, then only $10,000 will be pulled out of the reserve. Same goes for unemployment reserve. That can be used to pay for unemployment expenses up to the amount that's actually spent. So if only $30,000 is spent on unemployment, for example, only $30,000 will come out of the unemployment reserve. And the other piece is the employee retirement contribution reserve. This is related to the ERS employee retirement system and estimating 1.2 million or budgeting 1.2 million to come out of that, that reserve to pay for related expenses. So what's this mean in terms of the tax rate? Currently, when projecting tax rate for the following year, because assessments aren't final, district utilizes the 2018-19 assessment, the assessed values to project next year's rate percent increase. As you can see, it's a 72, 72 cent projection per thousand or 3.28%. If we remember the levy, that's the same exact percent of levy. And looking at the history of our budgets and tax levies and tax rates, we can see on the tax levy basis, the tax levy being 2.18 came in at 1.34. That trend continues through the years. Again, 3.21 was the tax levy increase in 2018-19. We saw an overall tax rate decrease of 4 and 1/4%. So we'd expect in the following school year, when we're doing the same presentation through the budget process, that this 3.28%, if, if the full assessed value increases, then that rate will decrease. If the assessed value for some reason decreased, then that rate could be higher. Again, trend-wise, we've seen primarily that rate has been lower than the tax levy over the past five years. And the final piece is the proposition mentioned earlier. This is the spending out of the capital technology reserve. Again, part of a long-range plan to ease reliance on the reserve. We saw historically, we've, we've taken out 2 and 1/2 million, a million, 900,000, 736,000 and now 464. So continuing to decrease that amount each year while, while managing the general fund side of the budget for this piece. This would be a separate proposition requesting approval to continue to withdraw to the capital technology reserve. And the final piece, I'll turn back over to Brett, future date now, right?
On May 21st, there'll be a budget vote and Board of Elections from 6:00 AM to 9:00 PM at Joanna Perrin Middle School. I'm looking forward to seeing many people out there to, to have a voice in this, this budget process. There'll be, again, two seats open in the Board of Education. Those seats are being run unopposed. The one incumbent will be running and there'll be one unopposed candidate will be seeking Board of Education nomination. Again, that's May 21st at Joanna Perrin from 6:00 AM to 9:00. Thank you very much. Have a good evening. If there's a specific question, by all means, you could sign in and ask your question. Oh, you want to finish reading it? Yeah, absolutely. Speaks to a proposition to use our capital reserve of $464,000 to buy technology equipment. Mr. Hastings?
Yes.
Yeah.
Who wanted to go with the behavior data?
Yes, we did.
And although, if you recall, I was a question, one day I, I was thinking that I would be doing this for a lot of years.
Since 1995.
Anyway, if it's a crap, it might, it might, it might be, possibly maybe, basically an issue that's now everywhere, I understand. It's an area that, I'm limited to the response, but 15 years, sort of, I don't know. It was here, that we're going to spend all this stuff incorporated into the savings thing and that's going to be really...
Yesterday, at the Board of Education workshop, Deb Tandoy, Fritz Killian and Debra Miles spoke with the Board of Education, had this very same conversation where the youth at risk, where the youth risk survey was processed at length, data was shared. And if you take a look at the budget, the line items in the budget, there's commitments to being proactive through our health education. Again, we've added two behavior psychologists to continue to work with the social emotional wellbeing of our, our students. You know, we have health, elementary class, in our elementary classrooms, we're very proud of the fact that we offer over, we're actually, we're over the mandate in health and without any apologies, the board makes those commitments. We have our asset leadership program and our partnership with CPAC. All those are investments that I know that the board, you know, are priorities for the board and it's in our budget.
That's all accepting, all my, to other places, other questions that I can contribute.
We're proud of that. We're proud of the community support and the partnerships we have with our, our law enforcement, our community agencies like CPAC as well.
I have a question, I can maybe just tell you. It's just a clarification.
Excuse me.
Okay. I promise I'll make it done. It's a clarification with the reassessment of the property values. So that allowed you to raise the budget more than the 2%? Is that what that slide was saying? Like commencing the total assessed value of all the homes in Fairport, was able to multiply that 2%?
Correct. Yep, yeah, so it's the formula, yes, the main, the main number is really this tax base growth factor. The other piece, that's a main formula, that is really the 2% that's capped, is this right here, the allowable levy growth factor. So that's based on CPI of the previous 12 months. So that's set by the growth in consumer price index. Yep. That's capped at 2% because CPI actually for the previous year was 2.44%. So that's the, that's where you see the cap of 2%. And then, you know, as it flows through payment in lieu of taxes, previous year, it's the formula-based as it flows through here. If the exemptions, the capital levy in the previous year, even though the, the capital levy was actually higher, that's directly related to the debt. So if we look, if we remember back on the debt service payments, we saw a decrease of about $600,000 there. So that's where you see that exclusion drop for 2019-20. But the, the main piece that ends up the driving factor here is the 1.0236.
And that was the first time in over many years that they said, don't just be being reassessment of property values, correct?
Yes.
Is that going to be a new trend, especially with the permanent 2% cap? Are they going to be keeping up with that better to allow people with that freedom? Or do we not?
I can't speak on behalf of the town and the assessment office, but I think that was the first time it'd been done in 10 years.
10 years, yeah.
Yeah. So I think that's typically been...
But then if you're, then if you have that 2% cap and they're not keeping up on the sets or vice versa, any other perspective that they do frequently, if anything, allowing us to raise the budget.
I don't think we'd be favored to do that.
From the many Facebook conversations I read around the assessment, I think you have people on both sides of that.
Facebook always tells the truth, too. There's always truth on Facebook.
It's the best place to y'all in.
Good question.
I didn't know that would touch that.
Yes, thank you.
Is the grade level staff number from our side, you know, is that public knowledge what grade level staff that's being taken from, the staff numbers that we're using?
I think it was third grade, fourth grade.
But I think we had some retirements.
Yeah, we had retirements.
Yeah, we had retirements.
Like number of classes, not number of teachers?
Number of classes.
Sections, yeah.
Sections. Yeah, so instead of being 10 sections, it's nine.
Okay. And the staff that has the STEM and the humanities, is that district-wide that's traveling or is that the high school?
No, that would be, that would be a district-wide.
Sorry.
Yep, to provide support in the classroom, you know, teacher talking to teacher, offering professional development on our initiatives. Dick?
I was thinking that there's a vault over some years, many years ago, you started sort of now this anti-Schulak thing, supporting a lot of that kind of education.
You talk about school to work? Yes, yep. Yeah, school to work, yeah. Career, yep, career, like we did advantage credit unit.
Industrial.
Yep.
I thought that was a great idea. It's needed today. There's a number of companies, smaller companies, big ones way back in the night days. But when you take a look at a lot of the smaller companies that have the finest kinds of work, and BOSI's, you took a look at BOSI's, BOSI's Horn was superb. Is there any, do you see anything that would affect that that you're planning on doing in the next year?
I see, if you take a look at our strategic plan and the initiatives, there's initiative that speaks to exactly what you're speaking about, college and career, the career readiness piece, getting students the opportunity to explore different, you know, career-based opportunities this past fall. And I think you were there, Dick, when we had a community forum on 21st century learning, and we had all different types of disciplines up here, skilled workers, you know, from faith, from the faith world, from universities, talking about what is the most, what are the most desirable traits in the 21st century workforce. And, you know, we had representation from the skilled workforce. So we're going to continue, hopefully, to build upon it. Next year, we're hoping to also showcase that work in a sort of a celebration of learning, of opportunities here in Fairport for kids to showcase, you know, how they're putting their skills to work from their high school experience. They'll be coming next spring.
You said you just presented before, like just this month, or last month? April, but our numbers are extended. And do you have a best, you know, difference of students being out there?
It's an untapped, I think there's more growth there. I agree with you. You know, the mindset is you got to go to college, but there's also another mindset out there is that, you know, you can get a viable trade or skill that could, you know, help you be productive and a contributing member.
Today I got a call from my, I don't know, third year college, it's been so many years old, and I got a call from them. Had any person, we just chatted about things, the one of the things that they were doing is incorporating more of industrial-based things in their personal, and then canceling some of those. Certainly ROP has done a tremendous job in that area.
We have our NASA HUNCH program, which will be celebrated here on Saturday. It's a multidisciplinary group of students who come together and, you know, solve problems and work together. And we have a robotics team, you know, that explores science, technology, art, and mathematics in one club. So we're committed to it. I think that's something we heard loud and clear throughout our District Advisory Council that, you know, we need to keep building upon that. And we need to continue to look at our facilities to make sure that they could support those type of learning environments, and that'll be talked about in the future as well. Thank you.